All right, we have a thumbs up, so that means we are live for our Facebook streaming work session for a preparation of our December 19th meeting, which is the last one of the year. 2023 has flown by. So we'll call this meeting to order. I think Alderman Sisdrup will join us. I know Alderman Brooks said he would not be here, so we will proceed. Mr. Ashford, back there, all geared up, is going to present the update on the manual, on the personnel manual. I think he's got a summary that he's going to provide, and it is up on the board behind us. So, Mr. Ashford, it's all yours.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Board. About every two years, we try to make sure we're in compliance with all the recent labor laws and things like that, and so we're on our two-year mark as far as updating the handbook. And so I just want to go over the employment section on Section 2. We've made some changes to the policy. These are some of the ones that are required, that we have to have in the handbook policy. And so working with BURK, we updated on Page 10 the harassment policy. And you'll see on Pages 10 and 12, in our old handbook, we had it kind of all summed up into one, and we felt like it was better to kind of separate the policies out. And so on Page 10, that harassment policy covers all forms of harassment, like sexual harassment and things like that. And then on Page 12, it talks about workplace violence, harassment. And so you'll see the difference between those two policies compared to what we had different in the other handbook. On Page 14, under employee classifications, we had elected officials in that section as an employee classification. We didn't think it was necessary for the handbook policy, so we just removed it. And then on Page 23, I have to admit, this policy, BURK has worked with this policy before with other cities, and it's very detailed, a little more detailed than the one that we had in our policy manual, and so we just replaced it. So this is a better policy than what we had before. In the Section 3, on the employee benefits, we updated our tuition assistant program, and the only modification that we made to it was the scale. And so our grade scale was off compared to what the university used now, and so we just updated the grade scale within that policy. So that one's kind of simple. In Section 5, on the compensation and then pay practices. In our old policy, we had, we got some locations who have on-call employees, and so over the years, that policy has kind of shifted. Most of them are moving, in the past, it was more of a weekend thing, and so what we've done now has moved it to a full week if you're on-call, you're on-call for the whole week. And so originally, we was giving them $120 for the on-call pay. We're moving it to $240 because we've expanded the amount of time that they're required to be on-call, so we just updated that section. On 6, we have a leave policy. We replaced the old FMA policy with a more updated version, and it's just a better detailed version of what we had before, and like I say, just trying to stay in compliance with all the most recent laws and changes as it relates to that. Under general policies, on 7, our vehicle policy, we haven't changed that policy in years, and so after meeting with some of the department heads and kind of going over the needs and trying to stay up to date on the vehicle policy, we decided it was time to modify it and give a more clear expectation of what we need for our city vehicles. On Section 8, under the discipline section, we just updated the language. The only sentence that we really updated was the one that says, "The board may in discretion suspend an employee without pay while on a grievance step." We're just trying to stay consistent with our practice, and it wasn't necessarily communicated in the handbook, and so that's what that policy change is. And when you get to the fire department section, you're going to see that this policy is new. The way the fire department was operating in the past, they kind of had their employee manual and their operation manual all kind of looped into one, and so we kind of went with the model that we have with the police department. They follow our policies, and then they have their general orders, and so we're kind of trying to pick up that same system with the fire department. They'll follow our policies for the majority of all of the employee things, and then they're going to have their own operation manual, which Chief will be presenting, you know, pretty soon. And then last but not least, we updated a piece of section under the employee acknowledgement piece of it, and the only thing we talked about it was being an at-will state.
Okay. Well, and so let's set the board's expectations. You're going to email the changes, the policy in the manual, to them today.
Yes.
With this particular piece here that gives the summary, right?
Correct.
And then we're going to be able to take it up, we will take it up on January 2nd, which is our first next meeting, so we'll have two weeks to go over that and look at all of it. I've gone through, I'm up to Page 50, and there's some little tiny little things, like a capitalization or maybe a subject verb agreement, which is not a big deal, but just, you know, look at it and for all those things, substance as well as just little stuff. We're going to have it out there in print, we want to make sure it's right, but anyway.
Okay.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Ashford?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Great job.
Anything you wish to add, Mr. Huskerson, since you've gotten engaged in this and this is one of your areas of expertise?
Yeah, I do a lot of these things, and it's a good handbook, a lot of things in a handbook, most things in a handbook aren't really legal issues, but the big ones are some of the ones that we kind of tweaked a little bit, and the big issue, and I think Nav does a great job with it, is, you know, consistent application. That's the key, that's where you get in trouble if you're not consistent with how you administer it, and he's been doing it a long time, and he does a good job.
Okay, thank you. Anything on the lady? Good, thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right. Agenda items, this is fairly short one, but I do want to make sure I acknowledge, and everybody knows that Alderman Vaughn's birthday is tomorrow. He will turn my age tomorrow.
You know your age.
Bing one, okay.
You're that age.
Yeah. Down, see? I know, I know, what can I say? All right, all right, let's go through this. We have three sets of minutes. Ms. Harden, I think, has tweaked them, Mr. Huskerson has tweaked them, and everybody's happy with the tweaking? To include, all right. Consent for those?
Consent.
All right. I don't know what kind of comments I might make, but this will be Ben's last meeting, so we will certainly acknowledge that, and I hope everyone got my email from yesterday about having a little something for him prior to, so please join us for that. Anything the board wishes to have highlighted? I'm assuming still no introductions, Mr. Ashford?
No.
Okay, all right. Anything the board wishes to have highlighted? All right. We don't have any citizens' comments, well, we will have citizens' comments, but we don't have any public appearances, and we have two public hearings. Mr. Havilin, would you give us a little?
Yes, the first one is a combination of a rezoning and a final plat. This is the University Motel, we're talking 182. They're basically selling property, we're going to sell it, but the current property actually includes a house on Apple Street, and so they're wanting to separate that off. When they separate it off, they don't have the same zone as the rest of the lot, because it's compatible with Apple Street, opposed to changing that zone to be compatible with the plan sometime.
Where is that, where is that?
Apple Street? All right, down off of 182.
I know where Apple Street is, but I didn't realize there was a motel, but I paid attention.
Yeah, the University Motel?
I thought it was across the street.
Yeah, yeah, it's been there for 100 years.
This is the one on one of the house?
182, yeah.
West of?
Oh, Apple Street, okay, I was on the wrong side.
Backs up to?
I was on the wrong side of the street, I'm good.
The school and then?
Okay.
You're going to pull up the map? There you go, there's your map right there.
I was on the wrong side of the street.
There you go, so you've got the motel, then there's Apple Street.
It's a very unique situation, so if we left the zone the way it is, by right, you could have a four-story building on that site, so by changing it, it preserves it, it'd be simple, fancier, like the rest of it.
So what's been planned for this?
They're just sort of itemized off, but I think they're trying to sell the rest.
Yeah. And P&amp;Z was?
That's U-DAM.
Okay, that, just wanted you to say that, okay, thank you.
And then the next one is a special exception for T-Mobile, and it's basically for their home color, it's like a bright agenda, which is not allowed in the UDC, and the planning zone commissioner put a 5-1 in favor of approving it.
Not unlike Ulta.
I was going to say, and you told me it was a branding color for them.
It's part of their branding color, it's very similar situation to what Ulta appears a couple of years ago.
Mr. Towne, let me ask you this, what color would they normally have, based on where our codes were at?
It's kind of subtle, neutral color.
Where's this building going to be?
It's already there, the home is already colored there. It's the former painting salon, that's what he's hired on, I believe, close.
So their colors out there now, it's just if they put an, if they change or do anything, they got to go back, they got to meet code or get an exception to do?
This is what it used to look like, and below is what it looks like now. When they applied for the sign permit, loud noted in the permit that the home color is not being approved as part of the sign permit, and they acknowledged it, and then when they went to put it in, the sign contractor put it aside, and somebody else came in and handed it on.
So they asked to forgive us, not?
Yeah, I think it was more of a miscommunication internally with them, but now we just got to do the right thing in the process.
And we applaud them for that.
The one on top is the older one?
Yeah, that was the way it was at the prime.
That better look, in that paint, or whatever the thing is, was that magenta?
Yeah, magenta's how it was looking.
I know people, I know two folks looking, they cross out right now, but I would say this, that we have these codes for a purpose, and what we do is set the precedence that everybody wants to change their color, they're going to call them, and we set right now, we set the precedence that it's an automatic, P&amp;Z approves it, and we rubber stamp it here. And if we don't, we just need to take that out, the color thing out, our codes, we're not going to be, you know, I think.
I disagree with that, because had it been fluorescent, I think you probably would have had a different response from P&amp;Z, and you certainly would have a different response from, I think, some board members.
The story that was given to us by folks building shop, they had a triangle shopping center.
Daniel.
If you scroll down so we can see it in context with the, yeah, okay.
There was that Ulta would not come sign a lease in that shopping center if they didn't get the color they want for it, that's absolutely not right. Ulta came to start with a store in St. Thornton, because the numbers weren't complete, the numbers weren't, they make a profit here, they wanted that color, and they knew they could kind of lean on everybody and say, we might not sign that lease with Casperity, put that store in, if y'all don't let us have the color we want. But I've seen in Gaston, Alabama, and places, a lot of places where they put, where they've been used, been forced to use the colors, they're in the codes, with brick and, you know, muted color, whatever the color, you know, I've seen their stores in those towns that are very attractive, and they in those places are not a lot bigger, a lot different than they are here, it's just that we granted exception because we, you know, we bought the thing, if they weren't going to put that store in here, they absolutely won't put a store in St. Thornton. But anyway, this is setting a precedence that the next folks are going to come in and ask us for an exception on, and it's almost an automatic that we're going to give it to them, and it kind of gets to the point where we want to, while we have this type of thing in our code, if we're not going to enforce it, I you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any, well, obviously, this is nothing we're going to have other than a public hearing and then consideration afterwards, so, all right. Is the applicant going to be here, do we know?
They were called, they attended virtually at P&amp;Z, but they were called very shortly to have someone here.
Okay, good, good, and then some of those questions may come up. Okay, all right, thank you. Under Mayor's business, these are leases that we have, with BURK's oversight, drafted for the parcels that we had appraised and approved, we approved the price, and these are the leases for each of the individual owners that have the encroachment on the property.
All are in?
Yes, yeah, well, they, we're about to send them to them, we'll see what they do, but they've been notified, they've been notified, so until we actually had the lease available to give to them and approval from the board, then it was, but we've had those discussions, and they're aware, they're on their way, so, anyway. Consent for those? Any issues? Okay. Board business is the reappointment of Bill Webb to the Golden Triangle Regional Landfill Authority for a term starting January 1. He is, I think he's still president of that, is he not? Is he not any longer?
He's the president, he's the chairman.
Oh, chairman, I'm sorry, wrong terminology, okay, at one point he was, I think.
He was, he's a previous.
Yeah, okay, all right, any issues with that? All right, consent for that one. Then airport, Rodney said he could not be here today, he's on his way to a funeral, but this is accepting the M dot 5 percent portion of the FAA BIL, BIL bill grant for the hangar, so any issues with that?
No.
Consent for that one? And community development, Robert McMillan?
Yes, he's seeking a reappointment, I believe he's one of the original members.
He was.
He is one of our four active members. He's seeking a reappointment, and with his reappointment, there would be one who'd been made.
Okay, and we've still got that out there for?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then final plat approval, any issues with this one?
I believe they've worked everything with engineering, correct?
We got everything except the actual surety in hand, so as soon as the surety is given to us, we'll sign it, we'll wait till we have the surety, and all the paperwork is done.
Okay, so from a final plat standpoint, we can?
Yeah, there was one condition on that, and it was just because they missed an easement on the plat that they submitted the last minute, and so it was just to make sure for the signature copy to add that easement. It was just a private?
Drang, he's drang, between lines.
Okay, all right. Anybody, any questions on Mr. Havilin on that one?
But if they noticed them, they've been informed that they got to do that right.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Consent? Final plat for Morrison subdivision.
Yes, this is a 210, saying you drive the homeowners there purchasing 33 feet of the backyard of 41 Kreisk Street, so it's just a replating.
It's a mutual, mutually agreeable thing, it's in your ward there, help, anything, you know those folks at all?
I don't know, that's how it sounds.
Okay.
Lots of them.
When I see the word subdivision, it always makes me think something bigger and grander than what it is.
Okay, and there was no issues from?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have Claimstocket, and then we have November financials, anything about those, Ms. Lisa, you wish to share? Typical, okay, consent for those? Okay, and then advertising for municipal repository, which we do every two years, so this is our, we're coming up on January, February, when do we normally make that change in that approval, assuming there is change?
Around March, right.
Around March, okay, all right, so this is just performer, consent for that? Okay. HR, Mr. Ashford, anything about any of these? These are all positions that are, replacement positions, okay. And, okay, and we have discipline recommended by Chief Ballard, nothing to share about that, we'll get, you'll get that in the packet, so consent, consent, okay? And then firefighters and sanitation department, okay? IT, professional services agreement, Mr.?
That's right, this is installation, excuse me, of the generator here at City Hall.
Okay.
With the oscillator.
So we'll finally get that done after how many years of looking for it?
Hit the code, and we'll head toward Ben's office.
All right, awesome, thank you, okay, consent for that. And then parks, this is advertising for the J.L. King Splash Pad Expansion Project, which would be great, looking forward to that.
We'll see.
All right. Police Department, we have 12 additional EOS body camera systems. Chief, anything you want to share about that at all?
Well, Mayor, just that this is sole provider, it is currently the same systems that we're using, we've had very good results with them, and obviously, protection of our people and liability, it's preventive.
And you are happy with them?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Okay, all right. Consent for that one? And then we have, A.C. Henry is excited to go to the FBI Academy, so consent for that one, all right.
If they're really for him or not, but.
I think, yeah, he was chosen, what, one out of 80 applicants, is that right?
Yes, ma'am, highly competitive, one of two in Mississippi against elected.
That's great.
No, that's wonderful, wonderful. And then utilities, Mr. Kemp, anything you wish to share about any of these in particular? We're back to the presidential determination again?
The first two are just purchase of transformers that became available, things that we jumped on, because they are in short supply, high demand. The third item is actually a really excited about, I don't know that we've ever embarked on a wood inspection pole program.
And there are a number of them around, you can look and tell need to be inspected.
This is going to be a pretty comprehensive evaluation of all the poles, you actually dig down 18 inches below the ground.
Fascinating.
And kind of check how much, how much diameter of the?
Do you actually dig down or do you bore down?
Dig down, shovel on one side, and then you evaluate it. But the other thing, not only checking the structural integrity of the poles, but we're also going to do a full assessment of everything that's on that pole, and have all that information put in our GIS database.
So really going to not only do inspection, but also a lot of data capture.
Okay.
And we've recommended to do that over a three-year period.
Will that benefit us in pulling some of those poles that aren't being?
It will, we've identified a lot of where those are. I think the other benefit it will do is, looking forward, we're moving hopefully to an OMS system, outage management system, and so understanding where all of those circuits are located, where all those switches are located, will help us better isolate where those outages will be.
And a pole replacement plan, I would assume?
We will, yes, there will be a pole replacement plan based on priority that comes following the inspections.
Cool.
That will be, we'll need to probably adjust our capital improvement budget to figure out how, obviously, how many have to be done, and then how long.
And is this going to take them three years, or is it going to be something they do, and then we just pay for over three years?
We've sequenced to do a third per year.
A third?
We did that because you could certainly do it in one year.
Well, it's a large amount of money to pay for.
From a cash flow standpoint, that was one reason, but the other is, we feel like there's going to be a good number of poles that they identify that we need to start working on and replacing, and we will not be able to keep up in the same amount of time as the inspection, so really think about it more as a long-term.
Well, that's fascinating, I will enjoy learning about what the pole status is, because I always, you see them start to turn, you know, bend a little bit, you wonder.
Would that consist of cable got some lines on there not being used, telephone got lines on there, would it consist in removing those?
If there are our facilities on the poles, we will inspect them. There are a number of poles around town that are owned by another party, whether it be telephone or cable, we will not be inspecting those.
Just Max South on lines, I thought just AT&amp;T on poles?
I don't, my suspicion is they probably moved some poles somewhere around town.
Okay. Great idea, glad to see we're capturing data, so consent for that one?
Mayor, how much is our contract with the company that is determining the condition of our streets, what's the annual cost of that?
Annual, well, it was a one-time, and?
It's just a one-time, they don't, they don't, this for a survey?
Well, I mean, there are? Or repeated at some point in the future.
What was this, what was the one time?
It includes the? Yeah, about 55, it includes the survey of the roads, but it also includes the maintenance plan, which is your catch-up track, and so if they were to come resurvey, it'd be much less just to resurvey the roads, importantly, there was a plan and software as well.
And we're going to be presenting that in late January, no, I'm sorry, early February, so you'll be seeing the results of that, and then a plan moving forward for early, first meeting in February, first work session in February, which is February the 2nd, will be, that'll be part of that work session, so. All right, consent for the wood pole provider, vendor, okay? And then lowest bid, source of supply, what else is there? Okay, consent for that one? And then professional services with GTPDD, and what is, what is it they're going to do for us?
This is the ARC grant that we received, and this, that is for the inflight pump station rehabilitation.
Okay, so they're just managing that grant?
They're managing it.
And how much was it?
Forty thousand, and that was the proposal that they provided to Lisa, I've actually not seen a copy of it. So it's, my understanding is to ensure that we are staying in compliance with all the federal requirements, labor wage rates, equal employment, I can't remember all the different bases, this is federal dollars, ARC.
Okay, so the ARC grant is 40,000?
No.
The cost of them? Okay, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, it's a?
Comes out of the grant, that's usually how PDD works, and I just want to make sure we were clear on it, because the language doesn't necessarily lead us that way, so, okay.
Call it directly, probably technically, it's an 80,000 dollar, 20 percent match, something along that.
All right, let's put that in there, let's make sure that's in the cover sheet, please, for past and future reference, okay, all right, all right. Yes, anything else?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Borg, what's the cumulative total amount of sales tax we've received, our general sales taxes, this fiscal year versus?
What are we up so far?
I guess we start July 1 would be when you state, when do we start counting, when our new year versus, I federal, we track federal fiscal year, one October 1st, but when do we start tracking what I said?
The stuff we actually deposit in this fiscal year is always two months behind.
Right.
They have a month to give it to the state, and the state has a month to give it to us, so it would be July, so, all right, we're about 120 up over where we were at this point last year.
Same cumulative, this time last year. Did y'all, I was asking a question, how many, how many firemen we still, we need to get full, get fires fully staffed again?
Nine.
Nine.
Nine firemen. What has the Ray Bureau told us about our staffs with them, with our protection rate versus the fact that we got this station offline right now?
I ain't heard anything from them yet. I think probably by February, should be hearing from them by February.
You think they're going to put us on, they're going to kind of mandate what we got to do by February, or what do you think?
I think that probably would give us opportunity to right the ship, probably give us some time. I'll try to hold it off as long as I can.
I mean, I just let the board know, just put a bug in here, so to speak, that there, we, since fires have been offline, we do have a three, a class three rating. And I know that there's disagreement on what the importance of class three rating is probably at the board table, but we do have, we've achieved a three rating. It does, in some areas, some commercial property, some residential properties does save people rates. It saves people insurance on the insurance rate because class three, if you are class three, you are better than class four, or else you don't get a class three rating. So I just want to, you know, kind of keep nearby that in the forefront of people. As we can add firemen and move as expeditiously as possible to restaff Station 5, which is, I think, would be the main thing right now. We got two things going on with maintaining three rating. Number one is the, is the fact that we need to reopen, reopen Station 5, right, Chief?
Yes.
The other part is we've just taken in a big new swath of land on the east side of town, and 1,300 more people, commercial businesses that are also factoring in on that, correct? So, but the first thing, we get this Station 5, Station 5 back open, right?
Yes, sir.
Just everybody's kind of keep that in mind, is it move forward, move through the year, move toward the budget and stuff, that I think is something, this is what, the second, third year that State, a file's been closed.
Second.
Second year. This is probably something that we should, we should look at doing. And as far as losing a cloud, fire protection class rating, I mean, I've known one or two towns that let their, let their rating slide back. It's almost unprecedented for city, would be for city to lose a cloud, a fire protection rating, and for a bunch of reasons, you wouldn't want to do that. But anyway, I just wanted to mention that and bring it up, because this is time to kind of do this. We can't do it in structured meetings on Tuesday night, but I want to bring that up so we can kind of put a bug in everybody's ear and kind of get people thinking in terms of, or in toward, you know, what we do for the fire department, you know, as we work, you know, towards the middle of the year, toward our budget for the fire department, that this is going to become critical, right? The Ray Bureau is working with us now, but they fixing to start mandating and giving us time frames, which we will be able to do that, or we will lose that fire rating. And I don't want, I don't want that to happen. But anyway, Mayor, you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else, anything else before we go? All right. Hope you have a wonderful birthday. We will adjourn. Everyone have a great weekend. We will see you on Tuesday.